Successor Agency and Financing Authority for the August fourth meeting. We will proceed with Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by our Yolo County Dr. Amy Suson. She's our Yolo County Public Health Officer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Suson. Want to say I recognize and appreciate all the work you've been doing for Yolo County and helping us stay healthy so much.
Thank you.
Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N dash two nine dash two oh, members of the West Sacramento City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via Zoom to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen. Members of the public are asked to watch the meeting via live stream on the city's website or wave cable. We will have live public comment and we will continue to receive written comments. And all comments received by six P M. will be provided to the city council and posted on the city's website. You provide a live comment during the meeting, join the meeting using the Zoom link, hyperlinked or the phone number listed on the city's website. I'll request public comment during item one A prior to the first item on consent and after the staff presentation for any other item on the agenda. Once I've announced the public comment period, if you would like to make comment, please do one of the following. You are joining the meeting via Zoom, press the raise hand button, or if you're joining the meeting by phone, press the star nine. When it is your turn to comment, the clerk will call you by name or phone number and will unmute your microphone. Each person will be allowed three minutes. Clerk will notify you when you have thirty seconds remaining on your of your three minutes to wrap up your comments. And once your three minutes are up and your public comment or your public comment is ended, you will be muted again. So either the three minutes or when your public comment is ended, you will be muted again. And you may also join by phone one six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight, ID number nine two zero nine five six four two nine three five, and the passcode is zero zero four two six four. And I believe the city attorney has a report for the closed session.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The council met in closed session to confer with their legal counsel concerning anticipated litigation. No action taken. Also to confer with their labor negotiator concerning the West Sacramento Peace Managers Association. No action was taken. And finally, a conference with their real property negotiators concerning the property at forty two hundred West Capitol Avenue and no action was taken.
Thank you, City Attorney. Next item on the agenda is item one A, which are presentations by the public on matters not included on the agenda. And council members are prohibited from exchanging any discussion on any matter presented under this item or asking any questions. And if there are any questions that anybody is asking from public comment, it will be directed to staff. The staff will coordinate a response. Madam Clerk, do we have anything in writing or a live public comment request at this time?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, we received public comment one A and a C raise hands for public comment. Let me call in Mr. Forrest first.
Hi there, am I live? Where's my video?
Yes.
I don't see a video. I'm sorry, just showing me an audio button on there. Hello, Mayor Guerrero and City Council members. My name is Forrest Gardens and I'm the President of the West Sacramento Mobile Home Community Board. And I'm Regional Associate Manager in Training under the Vice President of G S M O wealth here in the Sacramento area. The issue that I'm bringing to the city council today is we have an issue with the homeless folks or the unsheltered that are making encampments behind our mobile home park. The issue is is that during the last twenty four months or so, there have been a number of fires that these folks have inadvertently caused by their trying to keep themselves warm or to cook something or simply to light their their encampment. The thing is, is that if you folks know my passions, it's not only about mobile home residents, but it's also about the homeless. And the issue is, is that now I have these two groups coming into direct conflict with one another literally right in my backyard. The fire department has had a chance to come out on a few occasions and the management here, which seems to have a high turnover rate, it just seems to have an issue with finding keys to unlock the gates to get the apparatuses back there to spray the fires down. And the thing is, is that we have a hard time evacuating here because the city has their hands tied when it comes to mobile home park because we are regulated by H T D, the State Fire Marshal, even though our city fire trucks are the ones who do the response. So it's just a lot of hand wringing and it's really challenging. So the thing is between myself, there might be a couple of other residents who live here. You know, it's just I'm so sympathetic when it comes to the homeless folks because I get it. I know I know how it works. I grew up in Stockton. I was virtually raised by prostitutes and drug addicts and homeless. You know, it's just I know the suffering and I can sympathize with them because literally I rode my bikes to these folks growing up. So I have no judgment here whatsoever. The thing is, is that it's going to take a village in order to solve this because this is just a microcosm of the issue. And I'm going to be reaching out to my fellowship with Narcotics Anonymous and see if we can't get some open air meetings where the where the homeless are so that we can at least try to help them get cleaned up or show them where to go, when and if they are ready to get clean. It's just I can't come into a conflict with them because my sobriety is the most important thing to me. So what I'm pleading the city to do is to please contact the railroad company because they're the ones that have the gates and they're the ones that maintain the fences, even though I know that the homeless probably break the locks every other day. And it's just going to be an ongoing issue. That's why it's going to take a village and it's going to take a multi-functional support team to put this together because it's not just here. My major fear is that we're going to have a fire, jump the wall, and then this place is going to turn into a tinderbox. We can't, I mean, the manager here in the past has told us to ram the emergency gates with our car during a meeting that we had with Yolo County Office of Emergency Services. So you know, Mayor Guerrero and the city council, I'm here on bed in need to say, look, I'm not going to set your guys' feet to say, hey, can you guys solve all of our problems? But if we can get the railroad to fix this, it would be eighty percent of the of the work, which is kind of, you know, it's their property anyway. And then let us in the community help pull the weight on the on the on the back end and that's that's my share.
Thank you. Let's call it Miss Maria Gralva next.
Good evening. I would like to do a follow up to a public records request that I made number twenty or one ninety five from back in February or March. I had requested all the costs associated with the district elections voting issue. The city attorney's salary is public information. I had requested all the costs associated with the district elections voting issue and I haven't received it. I'm being denied this information. I received a lot of other information, but not the cost like the human resource cost associated with this matter. These are public records, I understand, under the Freedom of Information Act. So please help me get them. I've been waiting and I did an email and nothing. I also have a question for Councilmember Orozco. Did you know that it is a fact that at-large voting systems dilute the minority vote? It denies minorities their choice of candidate. It denies voting rights to people of color. Actually, this question is for Councilmember Ledesma too. So my question is, why do you protect a voting system that denies voting rights and dilutes the minority vote? Since two thousand eighteen, you could have switched to expand voting rights to people of color in West Sacramento and you haven't. You have fought tooth and nail to keep at-large elections in place. I want to know why. Did you know that you are hurting Latinos, Blacks and Asians too by not switching? Well, of course you know, because you're prosecuting attorney, right? And you know all about people's rights, right? So I just want to ask, why are you denying people of color their voting rights by protecting at-large voting system? Why? Voting rights are fundamental rights. Why do you continue since two thousand eighteen to deny people of color in West Sacramento their voting rights? I'm just trying to figure that out. Actually, I'm wondering if all people who work as prosecutors deny people their rights. Anyway, thank you for this opportunity to do public comment.
Mayor, that concludes our public comment for one A.
Thank you so much. Next, we'll go to item one B, Council Communications from our assignments and Councilmember Akala.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. I attended the July twenty second Yolo Laffco meeting. We, the board adopted Resolution two thousand twenty one oh six approving the submission of the Agricultural Conservation Planning Grant to the California Strategic Growth Council's Sustainable Agricultural Land Conservation Program for the Agland Conservation, which increases capacity for carbon farming for Yolo County. Also, we received a six-month status report on Laffco's Municipal Service Review, adopted recommendations for the Community Services District of Cashville, Esparta, Knite Landing and Madison. And we received a report from our Executive Officer on recent events relevant to the commission as well as the Cal Laffco Legislation Status Report. And finally, there is going to be a Cal Laffco two thousand twenty one conference announcement. I will be attending along with Supervisors Gary Sandy and Supervisor Don Sailor. And that's the end of my report.
Any other reports this time? Your pretend Ledesma?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Point one. I believe our last meeting was July fourteenth. So do we report out? Is that right? And so do we report out? Yeah, so I will report myself and Councilmember Akala attended West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency Board Meeting. Very short agenda, but we did approve on the consent item appropriating funds to conduct data collection investigations for the design of the federal projects and some really good news coming out of the federal projects. So we are supporting that and I just got updates on the projects. Keep going. So I just want to make sure reported out on that. And then last, sorry, switching gears, last Friday thirtieth, there was a meeting of the Sac Yolo Port Commission. And it was a purpose of the meeting was to go over some strategic planning issues and right direction on real estate and other court activities. So no action was taken during that meeting. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Pretend Ledesma. Councilmember Orozco?
Thank you. Yeah, I don't really have a substantive report. Regional sanitation met on July twenty eighth to do a tour for all of the new directors that have joined the commission. I've done two separate tours. So this was just something that was good for our new members. But we took up very little item of business and then tomorrow we actually, my commissions are actually after today's meeting. So have more to report for the next one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Orozco. And I just want to say thank you.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, there was one. I apologize. I did attend the Yolo County Housing on the twenty eighth as well. We did discuss in depth the migrant housing and got an update on migrant housing within the county. And we all expressed, it was a unanimous expression of concern. I guess one of our housing units does not have air conditioning and we're really working to come together to ensure that that's available for any of the occupants because it just is inhumane. So I apologize for neglecting that, but that was on the same day. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you for representing us on the housing commission. And just as a quick update, I know that you were on on top of it regarding Project Lukey and FEMA exploration to get reimbursed. And there was news recently that that has been extended to November. So I just wanted you to, you know, whereas you go back to the meetings, Councilmember Akala also participates in that. So that might help. And you know, I think we've extended it for a bit of time, but now get even reimbursement for that. So and thank you. I just want to also thank you for when you had your moment there to present. The Yolo Children's Alliance was a huge success. All children that were present got a backpack. And it was such a, you know, wonderful, heartwarming experience. And thanks to your work in gathering the school supplies, backpacks and everything there that families were very happy. It was quite, I think, I think there were, you know, hundreds, you know, close to almost a thousand families. You know, they were packed in cars, all in one car. Maybe four hundred cars, they were packed in the car and a lot of families were able to benefit from getting ready to start school strong. So I appreciate that. And with that, a few updates here. August second, the council school, city council in school two by two convened and reviewed the summer programming and return to school plans. And Dr. Hildreth provided an update about, you know, what the back to school plans that'll be released shortly to parents. I understand that they're also working with Healthy Yolo Together to finalize the process for families, students to get access to vaccines and testing on the school sites. So that should, you know, maybe able to get offered five days a week. You know, and that is that access, I think, will increase vaccination rates. So we're very pleased to hear that and supportive of that effort. In addition, they will build enrichment options such as Saturday School and inner school to provide additional options for students to get support, kind of remedial support for those students who fell behind. Dr. Hildreth is doing such an excellent job in kind of thinking out of the box on utilizing the resources that they have, their school sites and their facilities to be able to reach out to help students succeed. And Mr. Laurel gave an update on the city's plans for the A R P funding. And Dr. Hildreth shared her A R P update on expansion of mental health services through the A R P program and expanding outdoor learning options. Mr. Laurel provided an update on returning to use of the council chambers, which, as you know, the school board meets there as well and the technology needed to encourage public participation. So they will, you know, they will test it all out for us, warm up the technology. So once we get, you know, once we return to in-person, it'll definitely have some strong test runs and work out the kinks. You know, during the discussion of the A R P funds, we came to the conclusion that we're both working with the county and that may maybe having a two by two with our county partners to review the A R P expenditure plans across all jurisdictions. So just want to let you know about that as well. So there was also a robust discussion regarding vaccine campaign and initiatives. And, you know, I let them know that I will establish some access to vaccinations as well through some initiatives that I have, you know, put out publicly so that, you know, we can increase the vaccination rates here in West Sacramento. I know our, you know, Dr. Amy Suson is going to be, she should provide a little more background on that. But, you know, I know they've been doing an excellent job and been working with them on a number of activities that they've done here in the city. And we've been in constant communication on how we can improve access to vaccination rates among certain populations who are resistant. At this point, I think we've hit a threshold of those that would would readily have taken it, snuck in line, waited outside for a spare vaccine if somebody canceled. We've kind of hit that threshold and we're now a different phase where, you know, we need to to do a little more, you know, convincing and dispelling of, you know, misinformation out there so that we can get people to get vaccinated. Earlier today, the city-county two by two met, discussed the American Rescue Plan Crisis Now. And we plan to have a more robust conversation about the status of vaccines in our city. There were many proposals to spend the county A R P funding. And we were informed that they'll be broken down by categories such as health illnesses, et cetera. And the board will decide an allotment to be expanded in each category. The key topics, so you may be aware that county did a stakeholder engagement on gaining our feedback for the expenditure of the A R P funding. And in order of priority, the feedback was food insecurity, homelessness, childcare, behavioral health and workforce development. The county C A O will share the report that they prepared for the board of supervisors on the outcomes of the county's meetings, which is which includes West Sacramento. That'll be forwarded to you for your information. I think it's really helpful information. And I did attend that stakeholder meeting myself. It was really nice to see the participation among all of our community members and those who are on the front lines serving food, providing support for our unsheltered guests and those who serve children and our partners who care about behavioral and substance abuse treatment. So, you know, that really reflects those that are on the front lines who know what our needs are. And there's just quite a few people who don't have a voice and they reflected that voice very, very well. So just wanted to just let you know that it was it was a very good and effective meeting from my perspective as well and very grateful for the county taking the time to come out to our city and taking the effort in getting our input. Karen Larson provided an overview of the Crisis Now program, which is a federal, I'm going to say SAMSA, but I don't know if you all know, but Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration. And this Crisis Now program is an evidence-based compendium which provides twenty-four seven, it actually has several. It's twenty-four seven access hall center, which is covered here in Yolo County. Crisis Response Team, which is also covered here. The third component, which is something that she's interested in expanding countywide, is a twenty-four seven crisis receiving and sobering center for those who, you know, have a mental health issue or need to detox. The detox is is a new component. And the county's cost to implement this countywide is eleven million dollars for three years. And the city share is going to be about three hundred and thirty thousand each year for three years. Some statistics that Karen shared shows that fifty percent of the residents are released from a fifty-one fifty within twenty-four hours. So, you know, our police officers can make the attempt to arrest somebody, but they are released immediately. You know, the SAT statistic, which, you know, I I know that we may not have enough resources, but I don't see this as the solution. Is that seventy percent are booked in jail, released with three to four days. My perspective is these are folks that are languishing, in much need of services and support. I view mental health and substance abuse treatment, you know, as parity with like somebody who has diabetes or a heart condition and not getting access to treatment. And so I express my support, as you know. My background is a social worker and a clinician for the Crisis Now program to be expanded. I'm white and welcome your input and guidance on that as well as we move forward. Karen is is going to move forward in expressing, you know, more of this information. We just got a high level overview and going more into the weeds and discussing more with among the city council members. So for me, this program makes a lot of sense. I think it saves money in other parts of the county. And including, you know, having, one of the other options is a relationship with Sacramento that she said she's already opened up a discussion. So it reduces commute times. There'll always be crime out there. I did the ride along. I see a ton of unanswered calls because we have a shortage of police. So it's not like I think we're going to have, you know, the reduced calls, funds or whatever. But it does does alleviate our police officers who do what they're called to do and not handle kind of calls, which takes away from what I think that their priority is to maintain public safety. And these, you know, these things should be handled in the hands of a clinician and a medical and a behavioral and substance abuse sobering facility is what's recommended here. And I, you know, my intern also participated in meetings where Karen shared this with other jurisdictions. Like it included, you know, judges and police officers, you know, all the sectors of like law enforcement. And it was it was embraced. I'm really pleased that we have somebody like Karen, who's been a visionary, who established the crisis, you know, intervention teams, you know, way back when she was a behavioral health director here in Yolo County and continues to be innovative and creative to draw down what would be the best use of our funding to create the most impactful, you know, address the most impactful situation here in Yolo County and what we've received here in West Sacramento as well. I just want to say thank you to everybody as we all participated in National Night Out. We saw, got a chance to meet our neighbors. You know, we missed last year's, but you know, this year's is just, you know, was extremely exciting to see friends and neighbors and our partners in the community and in the agencies, police, probation, C H P and Yolo D A. And Home Run Program was out there doing some outreach and education. So really grateful for that. Thank you, Tracy. And just I want to, you know, give a big shout out to, you know, West Sacramento P D and Taylor. Big, big, you know, applause to Taylor for all her hard work, putting this together, making it successful. Making those connections is extremely important for our leaders to know we're here to support them. It's been a tough year and just letting them know that, that, you know, we're here to give them all the support you know, to to come through this together. Just want to also add that last week, Dr. Hildreth and Superintendent's Office and I met with Martin Luther King Junior Freedom Center Institute for Community Leadership. There there were about thirty youth in attendance in the organization. This organization is seeking to expand their footprint and engage our youth here in West Sacramento, either Yolo County branch, to continue to meet with city leaders and strengthen democracy and expand on their socioeconomic justice by educating them in nonviolent ways to enhance social justice and really understand the science of organizing. So it was quite, you know, rewarding to see a leadership institute such as this taking, you know, youth, high school and college students under their wing and giving them the tools and insight and the opportunities like this to be able to learn how to engage and establish social justice in a nonviolent way. So with that, we will move on to our next item, which is a presentation of the city manager's office, an update to the Yolo County Public Health Officer, Dr. Amy Suson on COVID nineteen. Eric?
Thank you, Mayor. So as I announced on July fourteenth, this was supposed to be our first council meeting back in person. Obviously, a lot has changed since then. It's been a while, though, since we've been doing weekly COVID updates at our council meetings, having a regular report. What hasn't changed during that time is our cooperation and coordination with Yolo County and our other partners on managing through this pandemic, both in terms of outreach, especially to the harder to reach communities. Lot of efforts on on testing continuing, but also on vaccination, including the most recent announcement, and as the mayor mentioned, it'll soon be available at Washington Unified School District site, which we're very excited about. Unfortunately, as much momentum as we had on on the initial rollout of vaccines, we definitely hit that plateau, like Mayor referenced, as has been the nationwide trend. And so that was followed by the the current very concerning trend in case rates driven by the Delta variant, which led to the recent measure to re-implement indoor mask requirement. So given those most recent developments and questions that I know you all have as as council members and community leaders, I reached out to the county and Dr. Suson greatly graciously agreed to be with us tonight to give a presentation and update on the COVID situation in Yolo County and to answer any questions that you have. So I'll say thank you to her at this point and I turn it over to our public health official, Amy. Thanks.
Thank you, Erin, and thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. I think Erin actually gave a very nice overview of of my presentation. So maybe you should just let him get give the the next COVID update. But I do have a few slides if the clerk could pull those up. Otherwise, I can try sharing my screen. Okay, great. And next slide, please. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm I'm Dr. Amy Suson. I'm the Health Officer for Yolo County and have been since all of the end of October of two thousand twenty-one. Today, I did want to give an update on where we're at in Yolo County with our case numbers as well as hospitalizations and testing positivity, talk about the predominance of the Delta variant and then the implications of all of those numbers for our COVID policies, particularly masking. And then give an update update on vaccinations countywide in the city of West Sacramento and then also some timelines for future approvals and authorization. So we'll go ahead and jump right into the case rate. Unfortunately, we've seen a significant rise in COVID cases in Yolo County since the blueprint for a safer economy ended on June fifteenth, when our case rate was one point two. The case rate has risen fourteenfold to a case rate of seventeen point The case rate has risen fourteenfold to a case rate of 17.2 per 100,000 residents per day as of today. Actually, if you could go, go back, you're faster than I am. Just wanted to compare the, the case rate in Yolo County to that of the state. Traditionally, we've had a, a case rate lower than that of the state of California, but that was because we were getting a significant discount for the large amount of testing. We've moved away from that adjusted case rate and are now talking about an unadjusted case rate. So pretty much what you see for Yolo County, which is shown, shown in orange in the graph, is the same as what is happening statewide in health. Next slide, please. Just for comparison purposes, for those of you who can think back to the blueprint, sometimes it feels forever ago, even though it's just been a month and a half, if we were under the blueprint framework, our case rate of 17.2 would be in the purple tier. Now that the blueprint framework has gone away, of course, that's no longer relevant. And what is relevant for, as a metric for gauging just how high a case rate is, is the CDC's framework for community transmission. And the CDC uses a weekly case rate. You have to multiply the daily case rate by seven to get a comparable number. And so under the CDC criteria, Yolo County's case rate of 17.2 is the equivalent of, of a weekly case rate greater than 100. So the CDC considers Yolo County to be a area of high transmission. And that has implications for its masking recommendations. Next slide, please. The, the good news here is that persons who are vaccinated, fully vaccinated against COVID, have a lower case rate than those who are not vaccinated. So the, the data from across California show the case rate among unvaccinated people being thirty-three per 100,000, whereas the case rate in fully vaccinated people is much lower at seven per 100,000. So that's about a five-fold difference, so five-fold reduction in infection risk for those who are fully vaccinated. Next slide. Unfortunately, as our case rates have risen, we've also seen an increase in hospitalizations for COVID-19. There are two hospitals in Yolo County. On June 15th, when the blueprint framework ended, there was one COVID positive patient in our two hospitals. Today, there are thirteen COVID positive patients. And you can see the, the Yolo County trend on the left and then in the inset on the bottom right, the general trend for the state of California is very similar to that of Yolo County in terms of the significant increase since the middle of June. Next slide. It's important to note that the vast majority of the hospitalizations right now are amongst unvaccinated persons. The numbers in Yolo County are small, so we have a lot of variability from day to day, but just a couple of recent days, for example, today, there are currently thirteen patients in Yolo County hospitals. Three of those are fully vaccinated, which means ten are unvaccinated, so seventy-seven percent are unvaccinated. But just a, a week and a half ago, when there were fifteen patients in the hospital, thirteen of them were unvaccinated, so eighty-seven percent of the hospitalization. So it's a very high proportion of those who are hospitalized who are unvaccinated. So just more proof that the vaccines are highly effective against preventing severe disease, including hospitalization. Next slide. I think this is the, the last trend that I wanted to share, and that is that the testing positivity rate, which is another metric of the spread of disease in Yolo County, has risen significantly since June 15th, jumping from 0.2% to 3%. The testing positivity in Yolo County shown in orange is still much lower than the testing positivity across the state of California. And that is because Yolo County still has the highest testing volume per capita in the state of California, thanks to the high volume of testing that's being performed on the UC Davis campus and through the Healthy Davis, Healthy Yolo Together initiative. Next slide. So all of these concerning trends, the increase in case rates, the increase in hospitalizations, the increase in the testing positivity are attributed in large part to the predominance of the Delta variant in Yolo County. The Delta variant is at least twice as transmissible as the original COVID virus. And we also have evidence, although it's inconsistent, that the Delta variant causes more severe disease than other forms of COVID. Study in Scotland showed that the risk of hospitalization with the Delta variant is twice as, as high as with the Alpha variant, which was the previous variant that we were particularly concerned about. In terms of how much of the, of COVID in Yolo County is caused by the Delta variant right now, we have very good eyes on this, thanks to the UC Davis Genome Center, which does genotyping and sometimes full genome sequencing on every single positive specimen on the UC Davis campus and collected through the Healthy Davis and Healthy Yolo Together initiatives. And what we saw for the Delta variant last week, so July 25th to July 31st, is that ninety-seven percent of the positive specimens genotype at the UC Davis Genome Center were the Delta variant. So that was 156 out of 161 specimens were all Delta variant. So you can basically assume that any new infection is an infection with the Delta variant at this. Next slide. So I, I want to transition to the, the policy change that was a result of all of these numbers that I, that I just shared. And I want to use an analogy. Some of you have probably heard me use this in other board meetings, but I think it's, it's helpful to help people understand why we're now asking everybody to wear a mask indoors. And the analogy is, is of a raincoat and an umbrella. And when there's a light rain out, outside, you know, you put on a raincoat and you, you stay dry. But when it's pouring rain, you look out the window and you say, you know, I don't, I'm not sure my raincoat's going to be enough. I really want to keep my, my pants dry, not just the upper half of my body, so I'm going to go ahead and carry an umbrella. Next slide. So the, the COVID equivalent of this is that the vaccine is your raincoat and a mask is the umbrella. So when it's drizzling in the form of COVID, when there's low case rates, a, a vaccine is, provides excellent protection. It's a very good raincoat. But when it's pouring rain in the form of COVID, which is a high case rate, a case rate of seventeen, like we have right now, you're going to want to add an umbrella to that raincoat, which means you're going to want to put on a mask in addition to your vaccine. So that's why, next slide. Last week, I issued a new health officer order that's applicable countywide. It went into effect last Friday morning for everybody in Yolo County, regardless of their vaccination status, to wear a mask indoors in public settings. And a public setting is defined as really anywhere that's not, not residential and also includes some of the common areas of congregate residential settings, like, like apartments or, or dormitories. So this is a new, a new requirement. It is very similar to the CDPH masking guidance in terms of the, the exceptions. So really, it applies to everybody except for those under the age of two, those who have a medical condition or disability, hearing impairment or communicating with those who are hearing impaired. And then there's some limited exceptions on school campuses for, for young learners who really need to be able to, to see their teacher's face in order to, to master the, the language. So that is the, the new masking order. Next slide. I, I want to transition now to talking about vaccines. And I, I think it's really important to emphasize that the vaccine is the best protection we have against COVID, including the Delta variant. And I know sometimes there's a lot of complicated messaging happening right now with vaccines and with, and with masking, and it can be very confusing. So I want to be very clear that I still strongly recommend everybody get vaccinated as soon as possible if they're not already vaccinated. And that is because of the vaccines provide very good protection against severe disease, hospitalization and, and death. So even against the Delta variant, which is the most infectious form of COVID that we've ever seen, two doses of the Pfizer vaccine provides between eighty-eight and ninety-six percent protection against hospitalization. Where the vaccine doesn't perform as well as we would like it to, and I think there's a lot of talk about vaccine breakthroughs that have a lot of vaccinated people worried and some people who aren't vaccinated saying, well, why bother? I might still get infected. We have inconsistent data with some studies showing that the vaccine is only about forty percent effective against symptomatic disease when infected with the Delta variant and other studies showing that it's still eighty-eight percent effective. So we don't know what exactly the vaccine effectiveness is against infection, but we do know that when fully vaccinated people are infected with COVID-19 and the Delta variant, they tend to have very mild symptoms and they're very unlikely to end up in the hospital or dying. So that's the real emphasis here with the vaccines. You're not a hundred percent guaranteed that you won't get infected with COVID, but it is almost a hundred percent guarantee that you will not end up in the, in the hospital or, or worse, dead from COVID-19. So next slide. I want to share the latest statistics on vaccination coverage in Yolo County. Unfortunately, we've seen uptake of vaccines slow and Mayor Guerrero mentioned this at the beginning, that it's harder and harder to find people who want to be vaccinated. These are just a snapshot in time, but if you've seen any of my other presentations in the last couple of months, you'll notice that these numbers haven't really changed a lot in the last couple of months. We now have fifty-nine percent of Yolo County residents who are fully, or I'm sorry, who have received at least one dose of vaccine and fifty-three percent of Yolo County residents who are fully vaccinated. So the good news is that over half of our population, and this is not just those who are eligible for the vaccine, but this is all ages, over half of Yolo County residents are fully vaccinated. But it means that almost half are not vaccinated, and that's the half that we're particularly worried about as the more contagious Delta variant is, is raging through California. Interesting to note that vaccination rates really vary by age, and we see a significant transition point at thirty years old. We have really good coverage for people thirty and older in Yolo County, really at least eighty percent of people over thirty are fully vaccinated or, or, have received at least one dose of vaccine. But we're struggling to, to get persons under the age of thirty vaccinated. So obviously, we're going to be doing some additional messaging and targeting to younger persons to help them realize the benefits of vaccination and the risks of not being vaccinated. Next slide. I do want to say a few words, however, about another sort of disparity in vaccination coverage I just talked about by age, but there's also a geographic disparity, and this, I think, is of particular interest to the city of West Sacramento, because of the cities in Yolo County, the city of West Sacramento is, is the least vaccinated. So you can see two columns here, the percentage of the population that's received at least one dose of the, of the vaccine and then the percent of the population that's fully vaccinated, much like the previous table, except for this is by, by zip code and then the zip codes within a single jurisdiction are summed up for a citywide total. So the, the city of West Sacramento is about fifty-four percent with at least one dose of vaccine compared to the city of Davis at seventy-six percent, the city of Woodland at sixty-seven percent, and the city of Winters at fifty-eight percent. If you break that down by zip code within West Sacramento, it's the zip code of nine five six oh five that has the lowest uptake of, of vaccine, and that's forty-three percent of residents who've received at least one dose. So we've been doing a lot of work to target nine five six oh five and the city of West Sacramento. Those efforts continue, and I want to say a little bit on the, the next slide about what those efforts are. So we do, the county has been offering a vaccine delivery or vaccine to order program for the last couple of months. We have agreed to continue this program through the end of August. I think Yolo County is the only county in California that offers this program. We will deliver a vaccine to anybody in Yolo County, wherever they are, seven days a week, between the hours of nine AM and seven PM. So we, this is a, a door-to-door delivery service where we come to you. So if you have childcare needs, you don't have to worry about that. We come to you. If you have transportation challenges, that's okay, we come to you. And one thing I don't think a lot of people understand is this is an absolutely free service that's being provided by the county. We aren't seeing that many people taking advantage of this, and I really want to see the uptake increase. So I've provided the phone numbers here. We've added a Spanish phone number, which is the five three zero three seven nine three four six five number. And as soon as we can find somebody who speaks Russian, who's willing to answer a phone, we have a Russian phone number, but we've really been, been challenged with the Russian-speaking community. We, we did participate with a vaccine clinic at the Yolo County Children's Alliance Backpack Giveaway just last weekend, and there's several events coming up where the county will be providing vaccinations, including at the Broderick Boat Ramp on an upcoming Saturday, at the Roadway Inn as part of their mobile showers program. Will also be at another Rivercat game. We've done several Rivercat games in the past. We're doing for a vaccine clinic for a transportation company that's open to the public. And we've also started a recurring vaccine clinic at our Health and Services Agency Satellite Office in, in West Sacramento. And then we have also been doing ongoing vaccines at the port of West Sacramento for incoming ship groups. Next slide, please. So I want to shift to the future and looking at potential approvals and authorization that I was asked to speak about. So the good news that came out yesterday is that the Food and Drug Administration expects to issue a full approval for the Pfizer vaccine by Labor Day. We previously heard that that approval may not come until January of 2022, but the, the FDA has, is sort of in an all hands on deck to review the data that's come in from Pfizer so that they can have this approval granted sooner. Many entities have vaccine mandates that are contingent on full FDA approval, and so this will allow those vaccine mandates to, to go into effect as, as well. I know a lot of people are interested in when the vaccine will be available for children. It looks like that timeline, which previously was advertised as September, will likely be pushed back, and that's because the FDA has asked Pfizer and Moderna to expand the number of children that are enrolled in, in their trials and because they have to have four to six months of, of data on those children after they're vaccinated, it does extend the timeline. So the, the latest that I've seen, which was published in the Washington Post, is that they anticipate the emergency use authorization for, for children five to seven for Pfizer would be in late October or early November. So unfortunately, we won't have vaccines for the, the start of this full year, which I think is, is next week in, in West Sacramento, but hopefully before children return for the, next year, the, the, the spring semester or, or quarter, we will, we will have vaccines available to them. So next slide. So in, in conclusion and summary, we have entered a fourth wave or surge in COVID cases. The graph on the, the bottom of the, the slide here shows COVID in Yolo County from the beginning of, of the pandemic with the first case in, in February of, of 2020, all the way since, since now. And if you compare that the size of our current wave is still less than what we saw last summer, but we are still going up. So nobody knows exactly where this current wave will, will land, and our own behaviors determine the size of the wave. So the next couple of weeks are kind of set because of the incubation period of, of COVID. But what happens after that really depends on our behavior. And I like the, and, and I think maybe I'm dating myself these days, but I think about COVID as a choose your own adventure novel, and the, the, we get to pick where we go and what page we flip to based on what we do today. So if we have people who are vaccinated and are wearing masks in indoor environments, then we're going to get our case rates back down faster. But if people continue to be hesitant and, and not get vaccinated, and if they don't comply with our mask mandates, then our cases are going to continue to, to increase. So I want to strongly, again, recommend that everybody age twelve and up get vaccinated if they haven't done so already, and then to remind everybody that wearing a mask indoors in a public space is now required in Yolo County. So thank you for the opportunity, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Sisson. Erin, did you want to add anymore at this point?
No, thank you. I'm, I'm good. I'm available for questions on anything city-related, though.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sisson, for that very thorough presentation. It's been very helpful. Councilmember O'Callaghan, you have your hand up.
I, I had a few questions. In the cohort of younger people, is this primarily like taken into account the young people at UC Davis? Are they included in that number?
It depends on where they list their address, they get vaccinated. Uh, it depends on where they list their address they get vaccinated. So we don't, we don't know exactly. We, we believe that the, you know, that the students that are currently living in the city would likely have listed their address as, as a Yolo County address when they got vaccinated, so they would show up as a Yolo County vaccination. But if they live in another county and they've been, you know, attending classes remotely and aren't currently living in the city of Davis, then they may have used that permanent address when they were vaccinated, so they may not, they may show up under a different county statistic. I will say that the, the university has a vaccine mandate and everyone, all students and staff returning to campus for the fall are required to be fully vaccinated and that mandate is not contingent on full FDA approval and it's already gone, gone into effect.
And my next question is, people who are being hospitalized afterwards, are they, are they asking for the vaccine? I heard that there's like a three month period after release or after, I'm sorry, after they have recovered, I guess is, I'm not sure if that's the correct word from, from a COVID or Delta variant, is that correct? And how many, did you say that there's an increase now in, in those individuals asking? Are they still not wanting to get the vaccine?
Yeah, we, we don't have data on that. Certainly anecdotally, I've, I've heard a lot of stories of, of people who are, are hospitalized who, who regret that they were not vaccinated. You don't have to wait ninety days after a hospitalization to, to be vaccinated. The, the ninety day came from some, some previous guidance and, and it's relevant for reinfections, but anyone who's been infected with COVID, we do still recommend that they get vaccinated because the, the vaccine tends to give stronger, more reliable protection than infection. But all you have to, if you've been infected with COVID, you only need to wait and through your isolation period, which ten averages ten, ten days after your symptoms begin. So you can get vaccinated just as ten days after your, um, your COVID infect. No need to wait ninety days.
And these, these new variants are because people are not, are not getting vaccinated and a new strain comes out? How does that work? Can you just explain that?
Yeah, absolutely. So every time the virus replicates, it has the potential to, to mutate and most of those mutations are, are harmless and, and they, you know, disappear, but sometimes there's a, a mutation that happens just, just by random chance of how these mutations occur that gives the virus an advantage, makes it more transmissible or it makes it resistant to disease. And then the, you know, that virus has more opportunity to replicate and it can continue to mutate. So the more the virus replicates unchecked, the more likely we are to get mutations that are concerning, that give rise to the next variant. So that's why we're particularly concerned, not just in, in Yolo County, trying to get more people vaccinated, but trying to get more people vaccinated worldwide. We know that we're all connected globally and in many parts of the world, only one percent of the population is vaccinated and so that's a lot of COVID transmission that's happening unchecked and it provides an opportunity for the virus to mutate and for us to, to get a variant that could be even worse than the, the Delta variant. So, uh, we need vaccinations here at home in Yolo County, but we also need vaccines across the world.
Thank you. And one final question. If we get FDA approval for, for the vaccination, how does that mandate work in terms of the protocols that we have? Does it give them more teeth? I mean, what exactly will that mean?
Yeah, it doesn't have any direct implications on any county policies. There, there is not a, a county mandate for, for people to be vaccinated once the, there is FDA approval, but there are some private entities, organizations that, that have said, look, we're going, we, we're going to have a vaccine mandate, but it won't go into effect until there's full FDA approval. And so it's those entities that would be most directly impacted. But we also think that there's some people who've been holding out for full FDA approval and that they'll feel more comfortable getting vaccinated once there's full FDA approval instead of the, the emergency use authorization. So I think there's a, a couple ways that the full approval may spur an increase in vaccinations, but, but right now, there's nothing county-wide that will be directly impacted by a vaccine, by a FDA.
Thank you so much, doctor. That's all. Any other questions among our councilmembers? Mayor Patilla Desma?
Yeah, and first of all, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. And first of all, doctor, thank you so much for being here tonight and sharing important information. I think this has been on all our minds, obviously for the last sixteen, seventeen months, but in recent weeks, as we've watched the vaccine, vaccination rates in our city and, but for all your work for the county and for, for this, I just want to say thank you publicly for all the work you're doing and appreciate all your efforts. I, I think part of what my, my question is, is kind of getting the message out to your point just a minute ago with, uh, my, my colleague, councilmember Alcala, was around getting folks to, the, the areas where the folks were having problems or, or challenges getting through to get the vaccination and, and I'm, I'm curious to what, what findings or where, what voice we can add in, in our roles as community leaders to help educate or find pathways towards. And I, I bring that up and, and as I saw, um, some communication from a, a doctor, I think it was in Massachusetts, who communicated, uh, they were having some success through communities, have actually have an event where vaccines were onsite, we did, um, uh, on Saturday at the YCCA event, had them onsite. And we, I think that we ended up having, I think, twelve vaccinations that day. And, you know, when it's up, a thousand people, I think, barriers out right about thousand people came through. It, it's just what, what can we do to help, help that event? And I think that was sort of the message that I was taking from that communication was that, you know, have an events where people, it, it's available onsite or not an appointment is made, but the education and vaccines are there.
Yeah, no, thank you for that question and, and for your offer of assistance. And obviously, if, you know, if there were an easy answer, we, we would have figured it out and we would have more people vaccinated at this point. But I, I think one of the, the ways that you could be most helpful is bringing events to our awareness that, that are coming up so that we can arrange to have a vaccine team there. I mean, we were at the YCCA Backpack Giveaway, we're going to be at the Broderick Boat Ramp, but if, if there's other opportunities where a gathering is already happening, we would be, we'd be happy to, to show up with our vaccines. You know, I, I don't necessarily know that, um, you know, we're, we're happy to schedule events around vaccination, but oftentimes, meeting people where they're already at is, makes it really easy just to have vaccines there. So just let my office know about an event and we will, we will show up with vaccine in hand.
And, and thank you. And, and I think that's, um, that's kind of what I was thinking is, is that we are learning events or even planning events for various reasons, having you available, that number still applies where we can reach out. And, and the other question is, that's just on the vaccination rate, because I, in comparative to our colleagues and our, our, in Yolo County, I was just looking at the Sack County rates and we're, we're more geographically akin to them and we're still, uh, I think, parts, we're, we're still behind in some areas of Sack County. And I was trying to figure, figure how we are, um, are we learning anything from the Sacramento County side or what coordination are we having with them in terms? Because that's, you know, we, we, we often, most of our, uh, uh, population ends up being at work in, in Sack County. And so are we trading or we getting information from them as, as vaccinations come up from, from our residents in Sack County, uh, if they get vaccinated on that side of the river? Or getting that data back and it's adding in, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. It, it all depends on the address that somebody lists as, as their home address when they're vaccinated. So it doesn't matter where you get vaccinated, it will show up as a Yolo County vaccine as long as you list the Yolo County address. So if somebody who lives in West Sacramento gets vaccinated in Sacramento County, it'll still show up as a Yolo County resident who was, who was vaccinated. So that unfortunately is, is not the reason why the vaccine numbers are, are low in, in the city of West Sacramento.
Well, and my question is, or, or the question, part of the question was, is are we having any kind of coordination or, or communication with Sack County as their efforts continue? Because they probably impact our, our.
I'm on a call with, with health officers throughout the region, including Sacramento County, at least twice a week. And, uh, you know, the conversations that I've had with the Sacramento County Health Officers, they're, they also have challenges in, in getting certain communities vaccinated. So I've, I've certainly reached, reached out to them and they've reached out to me and I think we're, we're all struggling to, to find the, the secret for, for getting certain populations vaccinated. And I know one particular population in nine five six oh five that we're, that we're challenged with is the Russian speaking community. There's a lot of misinformation on Russian, uh, in the Russian media, Russian speaking media. And so I'm actually going to be doing a, an episode on the, on the Russian speaking radio this, this weekend, um, trying to counter some of that misinformation. But I, I do think that's one of the, the challenges. It's not unique to Yolo County because Sacramento County also has a fairly large Russian speaking population and the Sacramento County Health Officer and I have put our heads together on this and we still don't have a, a great answer for how to reach that, that population. It's particularly challenging when there is not a, a vaccine champion from within the community and that's what we've really struggled to identify in the Russian speaking community in West Sacramento.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rosco?
Uh, thank you. Actually, my comments were already, already said and, and through the answers I got, got the information. I just want to comment that, um, Dr. Sisson, she made herself available and we had a long conversation last Wednesday about, with, with staff, talking about next steps and I'm really happy to see that there are so many events happening in West Sacramento. I know we were talking about partnering with YCCA to actually do their own independent event. I just, I'm curious, do you think that, because I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm wondering, based on your experience, is it, is it a situation where people aren't as avid to come out? I mean, are, are we, are we needing to find different ways to, to, um, address, you know, the, the, the two communities that you had identified in the nine five six oh five? I mean, there must be a, a new and innovative approach. I know you're saying you're trying to make inroads in, but what if anything can we do as a council to support those efforts?
Yeah, um, I, I don't, I, I don't have any great ideas, but I, I think that's where I look to you as, as councilmembers who know your communities better, better than we do at the, at the county level, to help connect us with community leaders who may be sort of that, that door in to, to a particular community or if you have an idea for, for an event or a specific location where we should do vaccines. I think we, I lean on you for your insider knowledge of, of your communities and I'd be happy, as, as I have been with Councilmember Rosco, to, to meet with any of you to talk about how, how we can get vaccine rates up in the city of West, West Sacramento. We're working with community-based organizations, including YCCA and others, but, you know, we, we are struggling. We've kind of hit a wall and so I think an infusion of, of fresh ideas would be more than welcome.
Thank you. And, um, you know, I just want to give a little background of, of the work that I've had a chance to work with Christine Ivota, who's our county EMS unit, who's been a faithful, you know, foot soldier out here in West Sacramento for a while, where I, I met her at her Center Health Park when, when there was the vaccine distribution there that, seeing Jeff Savage, you know, out, out directing traffic, bringing in his own staff, opening up his doors, you know, to provide accommodations for all the volunteers. For a while there, I know you were having a shortage of volunteers during those vaccine distribution events because they were, um, well-attended and I was so optimistic that we would get our numbers up. And then you shifted gears to direct your attention to having vaccine clinics like at Holy Cross and areas we saw in advance. There was minimal participation, so you went directly into the community based on your, your read on what we could do and your, you know, input with staff, I think, we continue to meet with the ELC to look into how to, how to improve things in our vaccination rates, very sensitive to that. I'll say in, in connection with, uh, Kristen, uh, you know, we met with one of the, with one of the leaders in, in the religious community. And, uh, you know, they, they allowed me to have a chance to speak in their radio show as well, where I, I encouraged, you know, um, you know, Lex work on COVID recovery and, you know, do what we can to address that. And, uh, there was some tension there in that reference, but we also met one-on-one and Kristen did an excellent job where I got a chance to sit and listen to some of the concerns. There are some, you know, in my, you know, having a religious background myself, there are, there's, there's one in particular which, um, you know, there, it, it will ring whether you go to heaven or, you know, not. And, uh, and, and it's related to using fetal tissue. And, and the initial establishment of vaccines, not so much related to COVID at all. I have to say Christine did such an incredible job explaining how this is not directly linked to that, but there is some history around that. There's some history around the involvement reading vaccines. And, and she did such a great job. I wish I could have recorded her and take her message out there to people. And, and, you know, if there's opportunities for each of us here on council, whether we have a Russian community or, um, you know, a Spanish-speaking community, for like Kristen to articulate all of those, you know, you know, maybe, you know, maybe having Q and A and, you know, we just press the button where the answer is and then people can like listen to, can see those answers verbally in some way. So, you know, they're likely being spoken to personally. I will say we, we, we were trying to get, um, uh, the, the couple vaccinated and the gentleman was interested, um, except the Johnson and Johnson, you know, situation happened where they pulled it off the shelves and I was just heartbroken to hear how, you know, you never know. There, there could have been a negative impact, but I doubt it. And then it was put back on and it really hurt, I think, um, our chances because the Johnson and Johnson was the one shot. That really was really all we were able to do. They were like, if it's, if it's going to be anything, it's going to be just, you know, the one shot, that's it, don't want to do it again. My other, um, you know, experience in, in our, our minimal effort at the time, but we're going to work a little harder together, Dr. Sisson. Kristen, we're going to go canvassing door-to-door and I offer you all the opportunity to do that. As members of your community who are, I guess, the most trusted members that I see, you know, we could have Kristen go out there, but you accompanying her as an elected and expressing your, you know, concern and passion and interest for their health and wellbeing. You know, we found people who were interested in taking the vaccine doing that. We also found that these members of the community wanted to be extremely discreet because the pressure around their, uh, around the community, around their support system would have frowned upon what they did. So it was kept discreet and, um, you know, at least, at least we, we had a chance here and there. I think even, even those members of the community talking to the medical personnel, you know, in, in a home setting or whatever, could make it difficult. So I think, um, I think the challenge, the challenges are real. It's not just trying to get a shot in the arm, it's having a dialogue with them and trying to, trying to overcome that. Sometimes it's not just the, the COVID, it's all the vaccines in general that we have found to be a, a barrier. And so just seeing what we can do in our own small way, you know, I got the, and grateful, Dr. Sisson, for, um, having your team at the Broadway Boat Ramp, which is an initiative out together and entice people with the barbecue. I had to tell you, Kristen's got is a wealth of knowledge and tapping her for what she has found to be little kernels of hope and you have, you have the ability to expand on that through your leadership. I encourage you to just take the time to listen to what Kristen's learned and see what we can do to work in a partnership with, um, Yolo, you know, County Health. You was a health officer in EMS and anybody else. In addition to that, I want to share a sad story because the vaccine, those that are not being vaccinated, I attended a funeral, my ride along for, with the fire department, Station Forty-four, one of, one of local AMR. Employees did not get. Um, employees did not get the vaccine. Um, and as you know, um, reason why our fire department did not participate in a national night out is because they're coming in contact for COVID-positive patients um out there as they come in contact with the medical emergency. So unfortunately, um, an AMR, you know, employee died, got COVID immediately, um, died. Um, and uh, you know, I think it, it, it was shocking to some. Um, and just the question of, you know, why not take the vaccine, especially if you see it firsthand as an AMR employee. So yeah, there, there's some who just will not take it. And there are some medical professionals and there are some that were even in our vaccine clinics um out in the community, Holy Cross or um even in our Yola food distribution lines, um, who will not take the vaccine at all. Um, they will be offered, they, they're, in fact, um, Dr. Sisson knows that um they tried to um go into the food bank lines. That was a, you know, uh, you know, a suggestion somebody made and they were out there trying to encourage people. Um, and a number of our members of our community are from those that are not interested in being vaccinated and refused um when approached at the Yola Food Bank line. So even, even when um there is a large congregation of people, you, you will still get uh kind of like the, the um door, the wall um to being interested in taking the vaccine. So it's just, I think it's going to be, um, we're going to be hard pressed to, you know, get this job done and work together collaboratively with the county to, to make that, to make that difference. So um, just, but thank you so much for being here, Dr. Sisson, and, and providing some guidance on what we can do. Um, and do you have some questions about the? You're welcome. If you have some questions about the testing, I'll let, I'll let uh Councilmember Alcala go.
I'm sorry, just a real quick question. I, I had heard that there's sort of like an incentive out there, fifty dollars. Is that still available for people? I mean, maybe that would be an entice.
Um, so the, the fifty-dollar incentive, I think it has been completed. Uh, it was for the, the first two million Californians, uh, and I believe that they hit that, that mark already. Um, there are still some incentives being offered. And I know President Biden has encouraged jurisdictions to, to use their, their COVID money to offer a hundred-dollar incentive for vaccination. Um, so that's, that's certainly something that, that we're looking at in, in Yola County. We haven't seen um, you know, a whole lot of uptake based on the incentive programs that have been offered to date. And if you look at research, there aren't a lot of people who indicate that um, you know, a twenty to a hundred-dollar incentive would, would sway them um towards vaccination. Um, so I, I don't think it can hurt, but I'm not sure that, that it is the, the, the best way, way forward. Um, but we're certainly considering uh whether to, to add an incentive here in Yola County.
And uh, Dr. Sisson, on, on the testing, I think now that um, you know, those that are vaccinated and could be positive, um, is, how, how, what, what options um could we take a look at improving um access to testing? I know you have a lot of, um, a lot done at this point, but, and I think the school is going to have onsite testing um that, that I'm aware of, what they've shared. Is there anything else we can do to, that you, is there, do you think there are any barriers? Um, first of all, I'm going to ask you.
Um, I do, you know, we don't have an, an OptumServe testing site in the, in the city of West Sacramento anymore. I, our only Optum Serve site is now in the city of Woodland. Um, I do believe that Healthy Davis Together is offering testing at the Salute uh clinic for community care in, in West Sacramento. So that's, that's one option. That's testing that's open to the public. There's also testing offered for free at many retail pharmacy locations. Um, so that's, that's another option. Um, I believe that Elica Healthcare is also offering testing, um although I have not spoken uh with them recently about their testing program. Um, uh, so, and then I think that the Healthy Davis Together testing at school sites will also be open to the, to the community. Uh, I do need to confirm that with them. Um, so I think there are many testing opportunities. Um, I think it's most important for unvaccinated people to, to get tested um after a known exposure um or after a, you know, sort of a higher risk activity. But it, it's also important for fully vaccinated people to get tested if they've had a known exposure. And they should be tested three to five days after that exposure. Um, and then of course, anybody who has any symptom on the long list of COVID symptoms should be tested, even if they're fully vaccinated. So basically nearly any symptom uh right now is COVID until proven otherwise. So we do want people to get tested. And then I also want to point out, people can get tested through their regular healthcare provider as, as well. So there are a lot of testing locations. They're not necessarily being operated by the county. Uh, but I think that there's good testing coverage within the city of West Sacramento.
Yeah, just to add to that, there is another one that's still um operating at the Molecular Matrix site on, or they have a drive-through option. I just checked, didn't double-check that and it is operating still seven days a week. And uh, there's a number of sites also in Sacramento, just across the river, um that don't limit residency uh to that county. So I think we're uh well-covered, especially given Blue District is, is uh, uh, going to be offering as well their sites um and, and vaccinations as well.
Thank you, Aaron. Okay, very good. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Sisson. And um, you know, I look forward to working with you on a, on a candidacy and effort. Um, any other opportunities that, I'm, I'm trying to organize another Victory Outreach Church um event. So I'm working with the pastor there uh to, to maybe um end of August so that, you know, we can get more done. We're looking at a neighbor helping neighbors initiative, so I kind of give it more of a connection with the, with the community. So thank you so much for working with us.
Thank you. Just, just let us know and we will, we will be there. Um, and I, I second your, your praise of, of Kristen Wyvoda. She's really the, the heart and soul of our vaccine operation. And when she tells me that we should do a vaccine clinic somewhere, I always say yes.
Thank you for that. All right. All right. With that, I think we're good. And um, we'll stay in touch with Dr. Sisson as needed for any of our council members as she's opened the door for, you know, staying in touch with her. Thank you. Um, next is our consent agenda items, um, three to eight. And I'm going to be pulling item number four. We have to have a um separate vote for that one. Uh, Councilmember Alcala will need to um go off-screen and um we'll take the vote for that, that way. Um, but are there any other items, um, any council members would like to pull? No? Okay, I'm going to be pulling item number six. Um, I have a few questions. Yeah, um, these are my questions. Uh, there, this is um, I, I understand that this is uh to establish um access for, you know, to establish a contract to access on an as-needed basis, serving uh resources for projects that we have here or, you know, other projects in the city. And um, one of my questions is going to be around um, you know, compliance um with all laws, which is page three of the Contract for Services. And uh, just one quick question is going to be related to, for example, um, I'm, I'm aware that one, one particular um business here has um difficulty in submitting their um forms, DAS 140 and DAS 142 is required by the Labor Code 1777.5. Um, and that's to show um apprenticeships and whether they, they are making sure that, that they are doing that. And um, since it is a statutory requirement, uh, I was going to ask uh our city attorney, Jeff Mitchell, how um, you know, the type of oversight we have um as a city to make sure that they are, if there's any way to do some kind of audit on, on, on demand or as requested, um, to uh, you know, to just check in on that.
So the contract, as you noted, does require compliance with state and federal laws. That would include all labor laws. The city has the authority under the contract to ask for records, you know, business records related to the contract. So the city could certainly do that. I don't know historically whether the, how often the city engages in the kind of audit that you're talking about. There's a lot of contracts the city does and I don't know, and I defer to the city manager on the process and staffing available to do that kind of auditing. Of course, the city responds if there's something brought to their attention. So if a citizen or a worker um believes that there's been something improperly done, that would be brought to the city's attention. And then uh, the city does retain a thirty-day termination provision. So in the event of non-compliance, documented non-compliance to state law, the city would have the option of terminating the contract. But I would, you know, obviously, we wouldn't recommend terminating the contract unless we had documentation to support the idea that, that they were failing to comply.
And just to add to that, um, in, in this case, these contracts are with licensed uh firms, licensing actually first to the state. Um, and so part, as part of that process, um, they would be, you know, presumably audited by the state of, or at least uh have to show that they're in compliance to, to maintain their license. Um, if we became aware of, of an issue where um a, a firm is performing outside of those requirements, um, then certainly we would, we would look into that, uh, check with the licensing agency. Uh, but at, at the end of the day, you know, it's, it's really up to uh those with knowledge of that sort of thing to be reporting it to the appropriate agency. Um, however, if, if we are made aware, if we do get a report about something, I think, you know, we, we would definitely uh track that down. And uh, if it's found to be something that is uh, you know, provable and, and showing that a firm is out of compliance, yeah, we're obligated to uh then report it. And as Jeff said, we have remedies under the contract to, because of that provision, uh, terminate if needed. So I think we have adequate protection there. Uh, bottom line though, if, if someone's aware of something that is off, then it should be reported to the appropriate agency, which in this case would be the licensing body for uh this type of.
Right. I mean, I, I would, I would, I would agree with that. The licensing agencies are the ones who have the staff specifically for the purpose of enforcing licensing requirements. And clearly, compliance with um Labor Code and all other appropriate provisions of law is a key piece of licensing. So they are in the position, be- because, I mean, on a kind of practical basis, termination of one contract with West Sacramento isn't necessarily going to bring somebody into compliance if they're, if they're not likely to be complying. Uh, the risk of loss of license, on the other hand, that's a real threat. And those are the kinds of actions that catch the attention. Um, so I mean, I would always encourage people to bring it to the city's attention, of course, but also to take it up with the appropriate licensing agency.
Okay, thank you. Um, and the reason I ask, um, is it specifically relates to apprentices? Um, uh, you know, these um surveyors, engineering surveying is um under the uh, the Building and Construction Trades Operating Engineers Number Three. I did a tour, um, I think it was last Friday or the Friday before that, uh, where I learned a little more about how um engineer, they, they, they do have apprentices for engineering and surveying under OE3. And uh, you know, the type of education they're given, um, you know, just a year-long program of, of study and then they can come back and further be educated. And um, it provides a, a way for um youth, and that's something I'm really interested, to be able to get educated in what we um are contracting out for services here in our city, our local youth. Um, it's not at all like a um, you know, a CWTA, uh, where it's required to have local hire. But it, it does, you know, just enforcing this, making sure that um, you know, who we're contracting does in, o- open the doors for the apprentices to come in and learn. Um, through the um apprentice school programs that are designated, uh, gives our youth in the region an opportunity to learn uh from, you know, opportunities that we're giving out in, in our contracts. And if one is not really, you know, fulfilling that, um, I'm not interested in working, you know, with, with the, with the contractor who's um kind of just missing and not, not taking that into consideration and seriously um doing that. Um, especially now with um, you know, just how, how there's a lot of shift um in, in future employment opportunities where construction is going to be a big deal. Here in our city, we've got quite a few bridges, um, a few buildings that are going to be built. Um, you know, just a lot of development or courtyard, things like that. Um, we want to have, you know, those that are going to be having that um exposure, you know, of youth in, in the region to have that exposure to learn. Um, you know, college is going to be expensive for some and really difficult. Um, and you know, with COVID and, you know, kids falling behind, this, this may be just an opportunity for them to um get out of poverty. Um, so just a bigger gap of poverty and helping youth to open up those doors. And that's what I'm really supportive of here, um, like our Home Run Program. That, that's what we're about. Where we help and, and support our youth here with our own, you know, tax dollars. And, and these are our tax dollars, where I want to make sure that uh, you know, who we contract with do um open and engage um with the apprenticeship programs that I, that I've toured, because they do an excellent job in the training. And uh, you know, it is for free for youth to be who are interested and um, it's a great program. So I just want to make sure that, do, you know, kind, you know, in approving this, that we are monitoring that and um, and making sure that they are in compliance. So, you know, I will, I will support it today, but I do want to let you know that uh, when I do look at these contracts, I do a little research and if I find out something is um, uh, you know, probably at risk of, of not fulfilling that, I, I do bring it to your attention. Um, and just let you know my concerns about that. Um, so with that, I'll accept a motion for um three to eight minus number four to approve the item.
And Madam Mayor, while we're there, just um, the Councilmember Alcala is, excuse me, Councilmember Alcala's recusal is because of a potential conflict due to um ownership of land. It's just important that the record reflect the reason why she's not participating on that one.
Thank you so much for saying that. It's tough. Right, I got two here. Um, uh, Councilmember Rosco. Councilmember Alcala seconds. Madam Cook, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Mayor Protemba Desma.
Aye.
Councilmember Rosco.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
All right. Okay, this item is approved. Next we'll go to item four and we'll wait for Councilmember Alcala to be off-screen. All right, I'll accept the motion.
To move.
Second.
And Mayor Protemba Desma seconds. Uh, Madam Cook, please call the roll.
And so Councilmember Alcala abstaining. Councilmember Rosco.
Aye.
Mayor Protemba Desma.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Aye, thank you. And um, next, we will move to our time-set agenda item number nine, Community Development, which is a public hearing to consider Resolution um 21 dash 62 certifying the list of delinquent code enforcement charges directing that a levy placed upon the subject properties and questioning inclusion of these charges on the secure tax rule in order that they may be collected in the same manner as general taxes. I um, do we, Aaron, who will be presenting on this? Uh, Josh, is that you?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Guerrero.
Hi, go ahead.
So before you tonight, um, item number nine, as, as described, is the uh single property from 2020 that uh code enforcement has uh not received payment, or excuse me, the city has not received payment for, for uh um, the services that the, the city had to perform in order to secure the property and perform re-debatment on the property. Uh, it is the only property i- in this uh status um that was not collected upon. And um, the, we're just obviously seeking approval to place a lien on it with Yola County and have that uh attached to the tax rule.
Thank you. Are there any questions? On councilmembers?
I have none. I'll make a motion if there are no questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Um, Councilmember Rosco moved. Councilmember Alcala second. Madam Cook, please call the roll.
I'm sorry, do we, we need a public hearing on this? Open?
Oh, sorry, yes, we'll open it up for uh, no, uh, open it up for a public comment. And uh, before we move to a vote, and Madam Cook, are there any comments at this time?
There are no speakers, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll close the public comment. Now we'll take it for a vote.
Mayor Protemba Desma.
Aye.
Councilmember Rosco.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Hi. Okay, this motion is approved. Next is item number ten, Finance and Technology. Public hearing in consideration of Resolution 21 dash 45 confirming the diagram and assessment of bordering improvements may as to be made for the landscape and lighting district number one. And we have Ms. Robertson. And we have Ms. Robertson.
All right, so this, this item is a routine item that we've done for the last thirty years. Prior to the process, but this is a requirement of the county that we come before the council to adopt a formal resolution approving the map and authorizing the assessment to be added to the property tax rule each year. We're not proposing any increases to the assessment. But tonight, we are asking council to please open the public hearing and at the close of the public hearing, adopt the resolution confirming the map and authorizing the assessment to be added to this year's role.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Are there any comments or questions from council members? No, we'll open it up for public comment. Is there any requests to speak, Madam Clerk? I don't think there's anything.
Yeah, no, there are no speakers.
Okay, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to council. If there are any other comments, I'll accept the motion.
To move.
I will second.
Okay, Councilmember Rosco moved. Mayor Protemba Desma seconds. Madam Cook, please call the roll.
Yes. Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember Rosco.
Aye.
Mayor Protemba Desma.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Aye, thank you. All right, this item is approved. Next move to item number eleven, which is a public, is under finance and technology, which is a public hearing in consideration of resolution twenty-one dash forty-six confirming the diagram and assessment and ordering improvements for the storm drain maintenance district number one. And new Rayleigh's Landing. So I think we have Ms. Robertson again.
All right, so very similar presentation to what I adjusted, except for this one is for the storm drain storm drain maintenance district number one, which is also known as Rayleigh's Landing. This assessment has also been around for over thirty years. It is a requirement of the county that come before the council to adopt a formal resolution and have a public hearing. We are doing no increases to this assessment either. And this assessment was also adopted pre-proposition to eighteen. So same as before, we asked that council please open the public hearing and at the end of the public hearing, approve the resolution authorizing the assessment to be added to your tax rule.
Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Bring it back to council for any comments or questions. Right, we'll open it up for public hearing. Are there any requests to speak, Madam Clerk?
There are no speakers, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council.
There's no questions, I'll move the item.
All right, Councilmember Rosco moved. Councilmember Alcala seconds. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor Protemba Desma.
Aye.
Councilmember Rosco.
Aye.
Member Alcala.
Aye.
And Mayor Guerrero.
Hi, thank you, Ms. Robertson, for your presentations today. Appreciate you staying with us. All right, next we have our regular agenda item number twelve under community development. It will be consideration of a presentation on the alternative analysis, preliminary engineering and draft environmental impact report and environmental assessment, EIREA, for the Broadway Bridge project. And we have today with us, you know, Mr. McCoy will be giving a presentation, but we do have Ms. Sui is here with us. And Aaron, please, please present. So our new is now our newest executive team member.
Thank you. Yes, so we, as of this Monday, we have a new community development director. I've previously announced it before the public out there to meet her tonight. Andrea Ouse is our new community development director. She comes to us from the city of Concord most recently, where she held a similar position as the community and economic development director, has had a long, speaking career in local government and lots of experiences she's going to bring to this role. And we're really excited to have her join the city. Just want to give her a chance to say hi and we'll begin with the presentation.
Thank you, Aaron, and thank you, Mayor Guerrero and members of the council. I am thrilled to be here. I am really looking forward to getting to know the people in West Sacramento. I am, I will be eventually a resident of the city as well, so I'm really looking forward to that. And I am available to you for questions or anything else. But I really appreciate the warm welcome that I've already received in the last three days and I am really thrilled to embark on this journey with everyone. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce Jason to take the item. So thanks, Jason.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Fantastic. I've got a presentation here to share. Hopefully, everyone can see this okay. This is a presentation on the Broadway Bridge Draft Environmental Impact Report, Environmental Assessment, also known as an EIREA. The objectives of this presentation is to give a little bit of a background on the Broadway Bridge, discuss some of the alignment alternatives and the analysis that went along with those, the preliminary engineering that was conducted for the alternative analysis and and alternative alignment, excuse me, and the community participation activities that took place for the project date. The, what I'd like to see happen is that the city council review the locally, the recommended locally preferred alignment, that's alignment B, review the environmental documents during the public comment period, which is extended all the way through August twenty-third of twenty twenty-one, and provide any feedback on the documentation provided. So there's been a lot of planning milestones that have occurred that have set up this project to where it is actually at today. And started way back in two thousand and three with the Sacramento Riverfront Master Plan. That was an effort between the two cities to look at the Sacramento Riverfront, the land uses on both sides of the river and the transportation associated with those land uses and provided some recommendations. Among those recommendations were an identified need for additional river crossings to improve economic development and connectivity between the two cities. The next effort that stemmed from that was actually looking at where those different bridge crossing alternatives could actually occur. That was the Sacramento River Crossings Alter- at eight different locations, and I've got in the next slide and a visual for that. Those different locations were intended to serve either the North Market area, the Central Market, or the South Market area. The city councils accepted that plan and directed staff to proceed with identifying potential bridge crossings in the North Market and South Market areas. There was one other location that's shown as location number eight here on the plan, the Sutterville Road location. You may be well aware of Lake Washington Boulevard having a very wide roadway with portion of it in there was a lot of thought behind that with the idea that there could be an eventual Sutterville Road connection to I five. That during the river crossing study was an eliminated alternative based primarily on Sacramento's position that they did not want to have a connection there, as well as the California Department of Transportation identifying that the constraints on I five would limit the ability to have a connection at that point to I five, as well as residents having, rightfully so, concerns about cut through traffic down Lake Washington Boulevard to the industrial areas of town and the impacts that that would have on surrounding neighborhoods. During this time, City of Sacramento also identified a policy and they adopted the, what it was now called the Neighborhood Friendly Bridge Policy. See, it's supposed to cover all of these planning efforts for future bridges. They're supposed to be neighborhood friendly in that they're not overly large or tall bridges like US fifty, the Pioneer Bridge, that they actually serve neighborhood traffic, that they're accessible to pedestrians and cyclists, are architecturally pleasing, that they don't land directly into residential neighborhoods or primarily residential neighborhoods, and that they are low speed, low profile. In other words, they're, they're not going to being the speed limit of the established connections where the bridge be located. So some additional planning milestones that occurred after that effort include a Secog Regional Funding Program Award. It was four hundred and forty-two thousand seven hundred dollars combined with our local match for around five hundred thousand dollars in order to prepare a feasibility study for the Broadway Bridge in the South Market. We also, the next year, were successful in applying for and receiving a one point five million Tiger Six Grant. This is a federal discretionary grants program. And that one point five million was matched in funding from both Sacramento and to the amount of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars and West Sacramento for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for a total of three million dollars for this project phase that is currently wrapping up. There was also other milestones, including the Pioneer Bluff Transition Plan from two thousand and fourteen, which looked at the hundred and thirty acres along the waterfront that's primarily industrial and imagined how that would be transitioning from the current industrial uses to a mixed-use neighborhood environment in the future. That was followed up with the Pioneer Bluff and Stone Lock Reuse Master Plan in two thousand and eighteen, where the draft reuse master plan was presented to the West Sacramento City Council for submission to the Strategic Growth Council. That also identified the roadway network within Pioneer Bluff that Broadway Bridge project coordinated directly with in order to identify any potential traffic. So the phases that I just described was the feasibility study phase completed in December of two thousand and fifteen. That looked at a whole list of various alignments, different connections, what potential bridge types there could be, and gathered stakeholder feedback. We had a couple of public meetings and developed an environmental scoping meeting in order to move into this next phase, which is where we're at now, the project approval and environmental document phase. We have been doing extensive analysis on the different alignment alternatives that were brought forward in the feasibility study and work to narrow down those alignments based on what their environmental impact would be, what their costs are, and any kind of regulatory environment that would either preserve or eliminate the proposed alignments. There's two different future phases that we're hoping to move into after this phase. That's the plan specifications and estimates, also known as the final design phase of the bridge. We are currently entering into the final design phase for the I Street Bridge Replacement Project. We currently do not have any funding identified for that next phase, but we do have an accurate estimate of around ten million dollars, give or take a few dollars to complete the final design for the project. As it, the next phase on that would be construction. And this time again, we do not have construction funding set aside. It is programmed through the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Right now, it's currently estimated in twenty sixteen dollars that the total construction would be two hundred and thirty-eight million, but we know that that will be refined after the final design phase. As I mentioned, there were several alignments that were looked at through the feasibility study and early on in the environmental impact report. Few of these alternatives were reviewed and ultimately eliminated, and I'll get into that a little bit later. We also looked at different movable bridge types, as the council may be aware in previous presentations that we've had. Because this is navigable waters of the US, the US Coast Guard will require that this bridge is a movable bridge so that it meets the minimum opening requirements that's set by the US Coast Guard, which right now, if you go out and look at Pioneer Bridge, you'll see the height of that bridge is the set limit. And Tower Bridge itself will also open up, the Gold Bridge will open up to allow for that same clearance. The Swing Bridge, that's existence over the river, that's the I Street, Historic I Street Bridge. That is a swing bridge, so that does not have a horizontal, or excuse me, a vertical clearance requirement as it swings open and allows for clearance that way. We did go to city council early on to talk about what the potential bridge cross-section would be. We wound up recommending the exact same cross-section alignment that was approved for the I Street Bridge Replacement Project, primarily because we went through an extensive effort with federal highways, Caltrans, and between the two cities in order to identify what would be the most resilient and appropriate bridge cross-section to span the river in the North Market area. What you see before you also ended up being the same appropriate cross-section for the South Market area as they do have very similar number of vehicles and same amount of proposed pedestrian uses and transit access between both bridges. So again, the approved cross-section was having two lane configuration. However, that two lane configuration is large enough that it could be reconfigured in the future if fifty years down the line, there needs to be any kind of modifications to the bridge. So at this point, it's two twelve-foot travel lanes that are also accessible for transit. We have a twelve-foot center median. We have two six-foot bike lanes operating in road with traffic, but along with that, a three-foot traffic buffer between the vehicle lanes and the cyclist to allow for a greater low-stress environment for cyclists. We also have two twelve-foot multi-use paths on each side of the bridge to connect the River Trail on the Sacramento side and the trail on West Sacramento side, the River Walk, which will eventually get extended all the way down to the location of Broadway Bridge and all the way to the Deepwater Channel. We are planning for allowing continuous bicycle and pedestrian crossing without interference from the new bridge, and that would be vis a vis an undercrossing. You see this already in place with the existing Historic I Street Bridge, where on the Sacramento side, there is free travel for cyclists to go underneath the bridge. We are still continuing to work on that with Union Pacific on the West Sacramento side, although right now we do not have clearance to continue the River Walk underneath I Street Bridge on our side of the river. I had mentioned, we did a robust, robust analysis of traffic that is proposed with both the build-out of the general plan in Sacramento and build-out of the general plan in West Sacramento. This is based on the Secog Regional Traffic Model that's been calibrated with more distinct land uses for West Sacramento. What our analysis showed was that with these two different alternatives, whether the alternative B, which is proposed to connect from Broadway to South River Road down Fifteenth Street and ultimately to Jefferson, so essentially an extension of Fifteenth Street, traffic would be diverted along two arterial roadways, that being South River Road south, as well as heading south on Jefferson. Conversely, the C alignment dead ends into South River Road. So as most folks take the least resistance path in order to drive, travel by the model, which does a prediction on how folks would actually travel via vehicle, shows that most people would just immediately turn left and head down South River Road, placing a majority of the vehicle traffic through what is proposed to be a walkable, bicycable neighborhood of Pioneer Bluff and Stone Lock. This is one of those reasons that we are recommending that the B alignment is the locally preferred alignment in that it distributes traffic more evenly and results in fewer traffic impacts. This is the Pioneer Bluff Road Network that was approved back in two thousand and eighteen by the city council. We ended up redoing our traffic analysis after the feasibility study to make sure that any of our bridge alignment alternatives would actually work with the conceptual layout of the roads that were approved for Pioneer Bluff. And then once we ran that, that network again, we found out that the only alignment that would have a significant impact in traffic would be the C alignment. There were other alternatives that were considered but eliminated, as I've mentioned before. The A alignment was considered but eliminated due to conflicts with The A alignment was considered but eliminated due to conflicts with both the Chevron property on the Sacramento side and with planned redevelopment of the former Semex property. It required a greater amount of realignment of planned extension of Riverfront Street, making that project very challenging from a redevelopment's point of view. Unlike other alignments, Alignment A also required a change of elevation of the railroad tracks on the Sacramento side. And as well as a change of about a thousand feet of the alignment of that track, which was a big cost contributor and a reason for elimination of Alignment A. We also looked at Alignment D, which was initially considered in the feasibility study but removed due to the amount of traffic that would be brought directly to Circle. And as I had mentioned before, the neighborhood-friendly bridge policy directly mentioned not having an alignment that would go into a primarily residential area. As such, Circle Street would have to be widened out, and that would result in impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. And as well as the movable span itself was actually the largest of any of the alternatives, which is one of the greatest factors in project cost. Finally, the US Coast Guard, while accepting of the proposed alignment in the feasibility study, has recently let us know that their preference is for the Alignment B, that they are not recommending Alignment C, and that the Alignment D, because of the skew, would not be an acceptable alignment. So that leaves our two preferred alignments, that's Alternative B and Alternative C. There were C-one, C-two, C-three alignments, sub-alignments, looking at different alternatives for Alignment C, primarily to try to avoid the Kinder Morgan Pipeline underneath the river, as well as working to not impact Miller Park. And so what we wound up coming up with was a refined Alternative C, and those sub-alignments were then dropped. We went ahead and conducted the preliminary engineering of both Alternative Alignment B and Alternative Alignment C. If I toggle back and forth here for you, you can see the difference between these two alignments, this being Alignment B and this being Alignment C. Again, Alignment B continues through connecting with South River Road, the Future Rail Street, and ultimately Jefferson Boulevard, where Alternative C deadends directly into South River Road, which would mean that a majority of the vehicles would be turning left to head south as opposed to distributing the traffic a little more evenly. So the recommended preferred alignment is Alignment B. This is subject, of course, to the public review and comment period, which we are in the middle of right now, as well as ultimate city council approval. Alternative B satisfies the purpose and need of the project better than Alternative C in that unlike any of the other alternatives, as well as Alternative C, requires fewer changes in the approved mobility network in West Sacramento, results in a greater future congestion relief, causes a lesser amount of permanent and temporary impacts on sensitive terrestrial and aquatic habitat, and also significantly reduces vehicle miles traveled in Alignment C in the year twenty forty, actually, near twenty existing to twenty thirty, all the way through twenty forty analysis. A note on bridge architectural design, most recently, we had a, our public meeting, our virtual open house, that was on July twenty eighth. And we noticed that a majority of the questions and comments we were receiving were related to design. Not surprising, because the Ice Street Bridge Replacement Project actually had funding to do the design in advance during the P A E B phase, where this phase with this project is actually going to be looking at bridge architectural design in the final design phase of the project, but early. So what we wanted to do was just be very clear that this project does not look at a variety of design elements, because it does not have a bearing on the environmental impact associated with receiving the environmental permits for this project. So specifically, design elements addressed in the next phase are going to be everything from the type of bridge, that would be, is it a double-leafed bascule bridge? Is it vertical lift like the Tower Bridge or a swing bridge like the Historic Ice Street Bridge? We do not get into the mechanical or structural components of the bridge. We do not get into specific items of design for pedestrian bicycle amenities. You know, specifically, what does the bicycle buffer look like? That was one of the main comments that we had received over and over. Well, it should be vertical delineators, it should be a concrete curb. These things won't be decided until we get into the final design. There are a number of related projects. I won't go into all of them, because the council is very familiar with all of these. But we did take into consideration existing and planned projects within both cities with relationship to the Broadway Bridge. We have had robust community participation. We had a community open house with over eighty members of the public attending back in two thousand and fifteen with feasibility study. We had a very large outreach event with over two hundred and thirty folks attending, and we called it the Riverfront Renaissance, because both Sacramento and West Sacramento were and continue to do a number of projects along the waterfront to transform from the industrial age of the twentieth century to a more twenty-first century urban renewal. And so we highlighted all of these different projects. It gave folks an opportunity to provide comments on not just Broadway Bridge, but a wide variety of projects along the waterfront. And given that so many are so interrelated, it was, it was really widely praised for providing a lot more information than one would get at just going to a standard public meeting. We had an environmental public scoping meeting, as I had mentioned earlier, for the Broadway Bridge with over seventy community members attending. And this was actually held in Sacramento. We tried to go back and forth between Sacramento and West Sacramento to give people an opportunity in each of the cities to be able to attend in their own community. We also had a number of council and commission meetings that I have listed here, including most recently on Monday, a Transportation Mobility and Infrastructure Commission meeting. I did mention the virtual open, public open house. We had a virtual meeting, but we still provided opportunity for folks to ask questions in the chat box. And then we tried to answer as many questions as possible. We took some breaks during our presentation to answer what we could answer. Formally, all of the comments that we receive will be addressed in the final environmental impact report. The F E I R just basically lists all of the different comments, letters, questions that we receive, and we provide answers for those, and then we publish that into a final report. I am asking members of the public to please provide any comments that you have directly to me, and I'd be happy to forward those on for a formal answer. I have been trying to answer as many as I can, all of which get forwarded for official publication. The public comment period closes at four PM sharp on August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. So please get any comments that you would like to have published in the F E I R in before that date and time. I've provided here my address if you want to submit a formal letter. Again, that letter must be received by four PM on August twenty-third. Or you can email me, and I've provided my email here, M C C O Y J at cityofwestsacramento.org. We have webpage set up for Broadway Bridge in West Sacramento. I believe there's also a link in the city of Sacramento's website to our documents. Here is the webpage. I will not read it out. If you go to the city of West Sacramento's main website and you go to projects, it's government departments, capital projects, you'll find the site there. We've also got a YouTube presentation of the open house that has been posted as well, if you'd like to see it in its entirety. We did receive feedback from the Transportation Mobility and Infrastructure Commission. I have three slides here. I don't want to read all of them out, but a majority of our questions are actually focused on not so much the environmental side of things, but more on the maintenance side. So questions we had received regarding, well, what are we doing about funding maintenance for the bridge? One thing that I will say that we have initiated dialogue on specifically with the Ice Street Bridge Replacement Project is how we are going to address financing and long-term maintenance, including the potential for formation of a Joint Powers Authority or a J P A. Since both cities are actually going to have responsibility for maintenance of these bridges, we do have the Ice Street Bridge Replacement, this bridge, the Broadway Bridge. In the future, we have the Ice Street Bridge deck conversion, that's the conversion of the top deck of the Historic Ice Street railroad bridge to a bicycle and pedestrian facility with associated ramps. And I'm sure many of the council members are aware that Caltrans has been asking repeatedly for the cities to take over Tower Bridge. Although, you know, at this point, that discussion has not carried forward. If that were to ever happen, all of these bridges would need to be addressed for their long-term operations and maintenance. And a Joint Powers Authority would be a good mechanism to do that. Currently, we do have a J P A established, that is, the Riverfront J P A, that was formed for the Downtown Riverfront Street Park, which is the light rail extension from Sacramento into West Sacramento. It has been developed so that if it pleases both cities, it can be expanded to encompass all of the bridges that we have planned within the waterfront. So we were going to take a streetcar project agenda report to the city council during this meeting for dissolution of the Riverfront J P A. However, after conversations regarding the bridge maintenance with the city of Sacramento, we decided to pull that item so that we could discuss a little bit further potential expansion of the J P A to accommodate discussions around maintenance. Again, these are comments that we had received from the Transportation Mobility and Infrastructure Commission. There was a question regarding whether or not CO or carbon monoxide was adequately addressed within the E I R, and I went back through and reread, and yes, it was adequately addressed. We did both thorough air quality analysis and greenhouse gas analysis, and all of that is contained within the environmental. There were some comments about looking forward to the project. There was two comments with regarding light rail and whether or not light rail was going to be going over the bridge or not, and the public would have the option to decide not to allow light rail to go over. That is something that, as a policy, would definitely need to be discussed. However, from a bridge design standpoint, it would not be recommended that we build in obsolescence on this bridge. If the bridge is going to be designed and constructed, it should definitely be allowed the support and structural elements that would allow for future light rail in case that decides to be an option in the future or not. The structural will allow that to occur. Regarding the budget, I had mentioned that we have a three million dollar allowance for budget for the current effort. We have expended fully the federal funds, which was required by Federal Highway Administration before the end of July. We were successful in doing that, so we are now proceeding just using the local funds that were allocated to the project. We had previously programmed in SAICOG's RTP, the ten million dollars for PSNE and two hundred and thirty-eight million estimated for construction. So both of those are identified in the, in the regional plan for, for SAICOG. The current total cost of Broadway Bridge, that's if you look at Alignment B, including construction and all the planning activities that we have been engaged in, that's two hundred and seventy-seven million dollars. Put that in perspective, the Ice Street Bridge Replacement Project is coming in at two hundred and thirty million dollars, of which we have a substantial majority of the funding secured. The reason why this is a larger amount is because we're projecting that ultimately, construction will be somewhere around twenty thirty-five. And that's to give us plenty of time to engage in the final design effort to, well, one, finish, finish this and certify the environmental document. Number two, secure funding in order to enter into the PSNE or final design phase, which we're estimating between twenty twenty-six and twenty thirty. My intent is to apply for funding through both federal and regional sources. That would be SAICOG and also submitting a raised grant in twenty twenty-two for potential twenty twenty-three funding round. Were unsuccessful, I'll be able to apply again in twenty twenty-four for potential twenty twenty-five. So it is one of these situations where we have to think well in advance to secure the funding in order to get to the actual design phase. The design phase itself takes approximately two years to go through. Any right-of-way acquisition associated with the project will be identified, and that usually takes about eighteen months to go through that process. And construction ultimately is about three years from start to finish to construct a bridge of this type of complexity. So as far as next steps go, we have completed the open house. We have gone to the T M I Commission and received comments. We are currently giving you a presentation now. We plan on closing the public comment period again, August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, and will be returning to the city council for final approval by the end of this fall to beginning of winter. So right now, based on the current council schedule, the more likely scenario, given Caltrans needs a minimum of thirty days to review after the final E I Rs put together, it'll more than likely be final approval at the November seventeenth city council meeting. Do you have any questions? I'll answer them to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Jason. Let's see, I see the presentation. Here we are. I'll take it back to the council members for questions. See questions among the council members. No questions? Hey, I'll open it up for public comment. Oh, Mayor Pretemla Desmond, did you have a question? Open it up for public comment. Madam, are there any requests to speak at this time?
There are no speakers near.
Okay, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to council. Mayor Pretemla Desmond?
You, and, and thank you, Jason, for the presentation and all the work you've been doing on this, and the staff's been doing this for some time. I'm still laughing. Sorry for the comment on the Riverfront J P A, but that's good news. That's something we have been asking and saying, projecting there would be a need for that. So I'm glad everyone's on the same page with that, looking at that as a vehicle for possible joint funding of maintenance of these bridges. But, you know, I go back to the T M I comment, which is probably what the public is thinking. And I saw some comments on social media over the last week, since the, and thank you for doing the outreach. I watched a little bit of it. It was super engaging. Good job. And, but, you know, it does take this long to build a bridge, and, and, and the answer is, well, this is the first one we've done, or the second, now the second one. Or a chance for, since, when, when, when was the Tower Bridge, whenever that was, nineteen thirty-something, right?
Thirty.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, I know when we did the bridge design selection with Congresswoman Matsui in the Sacramento side on the Ice Street Bridge Replacement, we kept saying we only get, you know, you only get this once a generation. You get a bridge once a generation. You're lucky to get, get one if you're on council. And we're lucky to have two. We're working on, and if you count three crossing on, on the Ice Street Deck Conversion, which would be an important crossing for our neighbors up in the Washington and Broadard neighborhoods as a way to get across the bridge. So all this is just fantastic work and, and glad to see it get to this point. And we, this is really about building, getting the steps in place so you go pursue, we can go pursue funding. And so that the next generation that's sitting on this council in twenty thirty-five will have the lucky and the opportunity to Um will have the lucky and the opportunity to kind of do the the bridge opening. Uh for a bridge, which I think is really important, I think. Uh you you it it kind of brought back some of the discussions we've had in the past, but. Um uh around the importance of this neighborhood friendly bridge and. A place where I know uh council member Roscoe talks quite a bit about biking uh with with her littles. And the importance of uh safe areas and we're looking at the waterfront. Um and the and the trails there and and. Got to remember the folks in South Portland and and anywhere across uh across the river to get to the other side. Uh you have to trip, no one bears uh traverse Ice Street Bridges. It's currently done. It's very careful. Endeavor. Uh the Tower Bridge is much better. There's no opportunity on uh the uh. Uh Pioneer Bridge. So uh having this pedestrian friendly bridge where uh anybody from the from the neighborhoods in ways would work towards trails and. Bike friendly uh roads to get across to the Sacramento side. It's another, it'll be really the the second of really uh good opportunities to do it and to do it um. Without getting on the freeway is really important. So. Uh again, this is, this is just really good work and I approve uh or at least agree as we have already on the. Um um alignment of the um uh alternative B, uh which just makes all the sense to reconnect into. As you pointed out, the traffic studies and how that would affect traffic along. Uh what would be the next phase of West Sacramento growth, at least on the on the riverfront, which would be higher above. So. All of this is always good stuff to see again, and thanks for continuing the hard push of the rock uphill. So appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh Mayor Pretend LaDesma. Any other comments on council members?
No, just be brief. I just want to say, Jason, thank you so much for such a thorough and well put together presentation. Um very excited. I I actually live on Fifteenth Street, so I mean, obviously, I'll. I'll be seeing, well, hopefully I'll be on Fifteenth Street in twenty thirty five. But in any case, um this is really exciting and for all the reasons that uh Councilmember LaDesma. Uh raised, I mean, I think this is going to be a fantastic amenity. Um you know, uh funding, of course, pending. Uh but I'm confident that our it would be a fantastic um opportunity for the community. And for our climate goals ultimately and getting folks in out of cars and onto. You know, feed or maybe just traveling short distance. I think it really does reflect our vision for how we see transportation in our city. And in the, you know, uh adjoining region. So thank you very much for this.
Councilmember Alcol.
Jason, I was gonna say the same. Thank you so much for all this great work and um. Just a little bond, I wish we could break ground tomorrow, you know, um. I have to tell you, I'm I'm really hoping that we have uh some that. That proposed drawing. And I do like the um the idea of having um. Was it a suspension bridge? What is it that we have currently on the Capitol corridor? What do we have?
Where uh right now, we have two examples of bridges on uh Tower Bridge Gateway. Uh to Sacramento, we have the Gold Tower Bridge, which is vertical lift.
Vertical lift.
Right, the historic Ice Street Bridge is a swing bridge. And actually, it's really interesting that it's. The one of the largest uh examples of a swing bridge and heaviest in the country. So it's, it's actually pretty interesting that we have very unique uh bridges, including the new future Ice Street Bridge. Which will be the only movable tide arch um bridge of its height uh in the country as well. So um not only are we building bridges, we're building in innovation this fall.
All right, thank you.
Right, thank you. Um Jason, thank you for the uh presentation. Um you gave me to um go over this and. For extending the opportunity to um present to uh my new council member across the Sacramento. City Councilmember Valenzuela. Um hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to either connect with you or um, you know, she can connect with um. Her, you know, her folks is, you know, who are also our partners with us on this. And um we're also, um because we received a Secog grant, um and I and I saw a nice little presentation from James Corliss. Um about the investments made in the region. Um you know, there's just the the big picture, which I've seen in other Secog presentations. Um Mayor Pretend LaDesma knows that it misses its transportation. There's definitely a much larger network than just. You know, making the connection between our two cities. And um Secog was able to, you know, provide that backdrop. I I learned a lot from your presentation. I was a big fan of the Soderville Bridge and a diehard, you know, it's got to happen at some point. Um still am, I'm still optimistic, but uh I I do think that's a good investment. Um there, but I am. Interested in learning more in the future about, you know. I I five was recently is is modified a little bit, it's changed. I get um the principles that um, you know, Sacramento has adopted. Um, you know, so, you know, I I I still like to explore. I know that our residents and we haven't even grown as much. Um compared to where we're at now, so we're just gonna have um quite a few more, you know, thousand homes. And just the congestion is gonna still go up. I mean, I think we're taking a look at um. Based on your analysis today, you know, and um. I I, you know, I live, I'll be living in the middle at that point. I'll be, I'll be what be considered now the state streets um today. I'll, you know, in in my neighborhood, it'll be that neighborhood in the middle, um sandwiched in, you know, between the um. Older part of um Sacramento and then newer part. Uh so, you know, in in it's important to um express a commute that is uh first of all, outside of the car. Um and on bike or pedestrian or other modes of transportation. Um and I appreciate that you've looked at. How that connectivity is going to be happening um in our in a mobile action um plan. Uh because I think that's important to to show that, to, you know, as we educate. It's all, it's just like maybe ten to fifteen years away. Um and we got to start talking about it now. We got to start getting people to think about this bridge. Is going to get people out of their cars. Councilmember Roscoe was at the Rotary Club. Where I kept emphasizing that, like this bridge, get people out of their car and uh even though it's it's a, you know, they were like, is it, can it include cars? I'm like, well, it looks like it can, but I I'm I'm looking at the train. I'm looking at other options and how we can get people across out of the city um. In in into more efficient uses of our modes of transportation. Because um we're just going to be a big parking lot in Clark'sburg. He's never going to want to drive through West Sacramento again in the future like they do now to. Come to our our fabulous called New Rotary Club Meetings. Um so I just, I just got to say that um. You know, as we're looking at um, you know, preparing for the next phase. Then we started incorporating uh messaging around future of this bridge, like we did for the Ice Street Bridge. Um so we e- established more buy-in from both sides of the river. Um first of all, that we don't make it look like we're um. You know, but like the way you presented it impacting, you know, very minimal impact on the on the vehicles, uh try to lower that down. And I like this um Plan B model. Um and also moving forward, you know, you you have a very wide berth both sides for the uh bike pedestrian pass. There's a reason for that. Um and just kind of, you know, looking at, looking at the, you know, the way the Secog map was, very big picture of. Look at how you get to ride your bike, you know, and um, you know, get around much more freely and 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 look at all of these um. Uh modes of transportation um that we're trying to create, whether it be bike or scooters or uh. Other modes of transportation that um are just not using your car. So uh just kind of like, and and you did a great job. There's um, does it help me as I'm talking about that? Um, you know, let's take a look and focus on how to get people out of their cars. And that's really a big deal for the Riverfront area. Because we minimize the number, you know, parking, um because we want to emphasize. More other, you know, other modes of transportation other than cars. Um and so looking forward to the next steps, uh which I think you'll be bringing it back for approval. Um the end of September, um you have a deadline and I appreciate you trying to. Bring this to our attention and um, you know, the very good presentation, all the presentations you've been doing. Um, you know, with the workshops and. And and I was really appreciative when you kept saying, I will do the grant, um because it means you're going to hang around and continue to work with us, Jason.
I will definitely be doing the grant.
Yeah, we really need your institutional memory, your knowledge, um your experience and and working relationships. That means a lot to us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Right, and I think uh we provided our feedback and I think that's about it for this item. Um that's what you were looking for, correct?
Uh yeah, so just uh the the main, the main purpose of this is to get the word out to the public and to uh you as as our council.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, well, that that wraps it up and um we're seeing you back again for um final approval. Next, we'll go to our council calendar.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um just want to remind you that coming up on August twenty fifth. Is the Home to Suites brand opening. Um that's at ten twenty West Capitol, so just down the street from um our city hall. And that's going to be at noon. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Um city manager's report.
Uh yes, just really quick as a preview for uh our next meetings on August eighteen. Um a a few times tonight, there was reference to A R P funding. And uh but in terms of our communication with county and school district and uh the city's own plan. So our our tentative plan for now is to do a council workshop. Um in that meeting that will uh give more information about the city's use of its own A R P funds and plans will be more developed. So uh look, look ahead for that. So but that's, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
City attorney report.
I'm playing tonight.
Um in future agenda item request by council, I do have a a suggestion um. For this, I attended a home run um luncheon. For our participants of the program who um did, were summer interns. So so impressive, um you know, it's a group of people. And um saw them, you know, saw a couple of them and my nieces um and and around town. Um so we're just hoping maybe we can meet them in the future here, um you know. Uh if they want to share, you know, cut a little time in our council meeting, just so we can hear from them and their experiences, if if that's okay.
I I think that's actually something we have done in the past when we used to meet in person back then. Uh so we can definitely uh work that in uh that that's a normal thing in the program. So the next opportunity we have. Uh for this past class, um we'll do that. Um hopefully, as soon as we can meet in person, uh we can talk to uh Justine and their staff. But that is something we normally do uh as part of that program.
Very good, thank you. I and I, oh, one more thing. I think there's a video of their work if you wanted to share that in advance.
Uh sure, we can, we can share that with the council.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think you're also going to post it in the social media, but you know, you can share it.
Well, we can do that too and and what we can, if we haven't already, we can share it in the council newsletter.
Uh okay.
Do it. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other future agenda and request by council? Hey, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mayor, please call it on.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Apollo.
Hi.
Mayor Pretend LaDesma.
Hi.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Hi.
Hi. All right, with that adjourned, good night, everybody.
Thank you.